And carried on scribbling. Time passes and what do you know? The girl that I was talking to months before had made her way to become a council member. The next thing you know, she was running against the mayor, who didn't know which side was up and fell right into that position. So, thank you, Mayor. It's been an honor to have worked with you on various and sundry projects, which is what I do best. Anyway, do I have time left? Yes, I do. We have fun around here, you know? I came in nineteen seventy-one, when the population had just gone from eight hundred to eleven hundred. I remember seeing that sign on on where the yacht club is now. Anyway, when I came, Morgan Lindberg was still mayor. I met him only once. The guy, he walked around shaking hands with his sleeves rolled up. I believe, the next one was Clyde Caldart. I may be off here a little bit. And then the red apple girl, who had to step down, she was mayor. And then Mitch, Mitch Micherson became mayor. If you recall, he sported an Afro from Alabama, sporting an Afro. You need one, Gary. Anyway. Then Donna Jean Bruce came along. Boy, she was tough. She rolled up in her tennis runners and put her feet up on the desk. Oh, those are the good old days, I tell you. We don't do that today. And then, of course, we have the, what's her name? You know, Quaid, that's right, who put us thirty million dollars in debt. I'm saying. And then we had Ms. Erickson, and I thank you so much for what you have done.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. I mean, you are an inspiration to the city, and you always have been, and you always will be. And so much of what we know of Pauls Bow is directly because of your hard work. Not our hard work. Sometimes it was against our hard work you did that work. So, but thank you, Bill.
Well, it's because of you where the city is now. You took the lattice two quarter or two, what, eight years or whatever it was, thirteen years? And you took it to the worst time. I don't know about the next mayor, what he's gonna do. I don't think he'll ever do what you did to get this far. And thank you so much. You have a friend in me, okay? I just want you to know that.
See you later, Bill.
Yep, bye.
Thank you. Comments from citizens? God bless him.
Good evening. My name's Leland Parker, and I'm a regular customer at your Marina. I'm a member of Freedom Boat Club. And I must say I greatly enjoy Pauls Bow. I'm not a resident, but I'm a neighbor. We do all our shopping here, so feel more of a Pauls Bowian than I do Bainbridge. I want to talk to you a little bit about the parking problem that you've been working to solve. It's not untypical for cities to have a employee parking problem, which you need to solve and change the parking times. However, for users of the Marina, a three-hour parking limit is nowhere near viable. And I'm not about to walk from City Hall or some church parking lot that's been recommended that I use. That's private property. So I need a place to go. And in my letter, if you had a chance to look at it, and you have a lot of things to look at, I know. But every month, I figure I, myself and people that accompany me, we spend about seven hundred and seventy-five dollars a month in Pauls Bow. You know? We're not coming down here to take up parking spaces, just to take up space. And speaking from Freedom Boat Club's perspective, which I'm not authorized to do, but from the way I see it, when I bought my membership for them for a substantial amount of money, they were a tenant of yours. And at that time, you provided them with ample parking. Well, the new scheme has changed the parking, which has changed my enjoyment of their business and would frankly cause me to give up my membership. And as a result, so anyway. But I think there's a solution. I found after I sent you my letter that the same parking company that's gonna do your regulation for you in Everett, they, because they read license plates, they have the ability to book by the license plate, they can also permit parking. So what Freedom Boat Club does in Everett is when I call and make a, or if I did, I don't do it there. But if I made a reservation there, I give them my phone number, and that phone number is put into the parking company's system. And so those people get eight-hour parking. Not that they're gonna use eight-hour parking, but they might, because they might rent a boat for a full day, which some people do. I usually go for about four hours minimum when I take a boat, so.
Mr. Leland, can you sum up, please? You have the red line. Okay.
So please consider having your parking people adjust their, utilize their system in a way that allows for customers who need ample time in the parking to be able to do so, and that is capable of doing it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Comments from citizens?
Good evening, Council. Michael Fitzpatrick. I wanted to just make a brief comment about something on your business agenda for tonight, which is the letter by Counselor Tabor. And I wanted to voice my support and congratulations to Counselor Tabor for writing this and bringing this to the council, and I commend it to all of you. Consider signing. And I wanted to just add a small bit of feedback. I'm not sure the status that is intended for the FAQ, if that's only intended for your use as you deliberate over this, or if that is something you're potentially going to pass along to the state representatives should you decide to send that letter forward. But just in case you do, I wanted to make a suggestion about Section Eight of that FAQ, which says, is this a partisan issue? It says, no equal protection under the law is foundational and is valued by both conservatives and progressives, and then proceeds to give a kind of characterization of why people from those points of view might support this letter. I just wanted to suggest that, one, there are more than conservatives and progressives out there, and so we don't need to fall into that binary. And, two, I actually think the kinds of arguments that are made in this can be appealed to broadly without having to get into characterizations of what individual groups of people or perspectives might think. That'd be one suggestion I make, especially if this FAQ is gonna accompany the letter to the state representatives. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments from citizens? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we're going into mayor's reports and council comments. How are you this evening, Mr. Tabor?
I am incredible. The rain hasn't flooded us up yet. I'm thankful for the updates that we received from all of our people working to keep us afloat. And thanks for the public comments and appreciate the suggestions. Other than that, no updates.
Thank you. Mr. No. Ms. Leodall?
Not much. It was Yule Fest this last weekend. Once again, it felt bigger than ever. Now, I was like, I was like, right there near the crazy bonfire, which I've tried to see from like others' perspectives, maybe how unusual it is to light a massive bonfire in the middle of, you know, but again, it was pretty amazing, and I'm curious if anybody for parks or anyone else has any estimates on how many people were there. I know there was a drone flying around. I don't know who was flying it, but I'd be curious to see what that was like. But it was good, and it was safe, and it stopped raining long enough for that beloved festival. So, that's it.
Mr. McBeig?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we had a great time at Yule Fest Two last Saturday night. Thank you to the sons of Norway for sponsoring and hosting that. I haven't seen downtown so busy since Viking Fest. It was just incredible how many people were down there. And I think Chief Harding, did we have any public safety issues that night down there? Good. Okay, good. I saw an awful lot of people moving off the sidewalk to go around people and into the street, and that's always a little bit dicey, so I'm glad to hear nobody got hurt, but it was very crowded. In regards to the gentleman about the Freedom Boat Club, et cetera, thank you for your comments. We've made a number of adjustments so far to our parking enforcement program. We will continue to evaluate that. You hailed up your handicap placard. Just make sure you're aware. Anybody with a handicap placard can put it on their car and park anywhere for as long as they want, according to last parking or parking enforcement, correct, Mr. Gelder? What was that?
According to state law.
According to state law, yes. So if that's an issue for you, it seems like that might solve your problem and perhaps some others' problems as well, but we will continue to reevaluate that. And thank you, Mr. Fitzpatrick, for his comments tonight. For those who don't know, Mr. Fitzpatrick will be our new city council member as of January first. Michael, I would encourage you to share those comments in writing with Mr. Gelder and Chief Clerk Rhiannon Fernandez. That would be helpful, I think, as we continue to process that particular issue. Other than that, happy holidays, everybody, and I look forward to a productive meeting.
Thank you, Mr. McBeig. Mr. Parker, go ahead.
The city looks lovely, and we have lots of stuff going on in December. I think this is the last weekend for the farmer's market, wrapping up that kind of the end of the season, and looking forward to that coming back in the spring. Thank you for the folks that commented. And yeah, just the parking thing, you know, it keeps, it's the gift that keeps on giving. I was in Seattle twice in the last three weeks, which is rare, very rare for me. But I went to a comedy club. I had some comedians that I liked about three weeks apart. And the pay parking on the street, the club was on. And pulling up, even with a Seattle tree of, you know, four or five parking signs on one thing, and you had to figure out what time of day it was, and the line, it was not hard to navigate at all. And put it in my phone and paid, I think, six dollars, and I was good for the night. And so it, we just have to let it, let's get it in place, implement it, and it'll work, folks. So I know there's a lot of concern and stress over this, but if we do nothing, it's just gonna continue to be bad. So we gotta keep moving forward, onwards and upwards.
Thank you. Mr. Stern?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of comments regarding our growing healthcare center of activity that's happening here in Pauls Bow. Number one comment will be regarding St. Michael's Medical Center in Silverdale. The mayor and I had the privilege of representing Pauls Bow at the dedication of the North Wing yesterday, attended by many, many people. That's representing now close to a billion-dollar healthcare investment for the peninsula in Silverdale over the, on the hill above town. I had the opportunity to compliment the mayor on reflecting on the work that has taken place to improve the facility. I just want to point out that our mayor on the health board not only led the charge on the Johns Hopkins study that identified our peninsula as a healthcare desert, and we're taking steps to address that, but also her work during and immediately after the post-COVID period, the emergency facilities at the hospital were inadequate and causing quite the crisis. And she worked on the, not only the health board, but the Kitsap 911 Board, along with all the fire chiefs in the county, to help address and rectify and turn that around. If I could ask you to comment on that before I continue, Mayor, it's deserving of comment.
Those meetings with all the emergency response people, all the various fire departments, started about three, three years ago, three and a half years ago. And we met monthly, and the problem was emergency delivery by the fire departments wasn't being done timely in the emergency room at the hospital. There wasn't capacity. At that time, the hospital was having had a severe shortage of personnel. I mean, they just couldn't, they were importing nurses from the Philippines. They were getting travelers, traveling nurses from all over the world. They were so short staffed. And so it was really a big deal. I, I am, I wanna, I wanna really compliment all the fire chiefs that used to come to these meetings to really sit down and work collaboratively with the various personnel from the hospital at the time to figure out, you know, the processes and how it, and how it needed to be resolved. And what happened is that's when the standalone EDs started to be discussed. Just the standalone emergency departments. There's one in Bremerton. They just opened one in Port Orchard, which is, you know, it's an emergency department, just like an emergency department at the hospital. And you can go there, and the fire medics can take you to these standalone EDs. But then the conversation is now switched to, how long do they stay in those EDs? And then when do they get transferred from those EDs actually to the hospital? So this is this ongoing arrangement conversation that occurs with our fire districts and the hospital. And I'm not sure why I got sucked into the meetings, to tell you the truth, but, you know, I, I think it's been four years this has been going on. Those, those systems that we've developed in Kitsap County are so critical. I mean, when you're in trouble and you call 911, there is an expectation that you are going to get picked up by someone, and you're gonna be taken someplace or helped in some way for lifesaving, lifesaving problems. And the complexity of ranging all of that system, whether it be Kitsap 911, or the fire districts themselves, or the hospital, or the standalone EDs, it's a, it's a really interesting series of problems that have been solved. And the credit really goes to the fire chiefs. They've been amazing collectively. And the people that run Olympic, Olympic ambulance service, amazing group of people. So it's important, important work. Somebody's gonna have to do it after I leave, so good luck. I'm outta here.
Oh, are you leaving?
I'm leaving. Yes, I am.
So the mayor's remarks, just for those in the audience to have a real clear picture, there was a period of time when the ambulances from the fire departments would show up at the receiving bay of the emergency room and be tied up in that driveway for hours with the patient in the ambulance. Never mind that fire equipment was tied up and not available for emergency fire response. So it was a real emergency. So much credit to all the parties, and thank you for that, Mayor. Just to expand for a moment, regarding the healthcare crisis for workers, of course, I think most of you are aware Olympic College here in Pauls Bow up on the hill is developing the Regional Allied Health Center, and that'll be training our own people, a lot of them coming out of the high schools, for permanent jobs so that the traveling medical establishment, we will be training our own to be in the community and staff these positions. Peninsula Community Health has its second biggest facility now in the county, right above Town and Country Market, maybe a quarter mile above on that hillside. And then lastly, I want to pass out, I think most of you have in your folders an article that just was published in the Saquamish News that hasn't received as much publicity in this community, and I have extra copies. Rob, I'll, in case staff is interested or the public. And so what you see here finally is the affirmation of the tribe having acquired what used to be the North Sound Bank Building on Highway 305. Recently, it housed Radiant, the development and timber company. And in it, they are talking about they have the funding and will be expanding into a thirty thousand square foot facility for opioid treatment for both the North Kitsap and eventually the peninsula region. It's a primary care facility as well, very similar to what Kim and her department are doing with the Recovery Resource Center and the cafe, treating the whole person, treating the whole family. And so I think shortly in the new year, we will be calling for an intergovernmental committee meeting, what the tribe refers to as the MOU Committee, to really get in-depth on what is now proposed for Pauls Bow, which will be another major medical facility housing here within the orbit of the St. Michael's Medical Center in our neighboring community of Silverdale. So just to note that, that you all should get a copy of this. It's important, and it's now in publication form.
Yeah, I was just gonna add, so at our last meeting with Saquamish, something that came up about this facility is that I believe it was fourteen other facilities like this already exist in the state, fourteen. And so we discussed the possibility of getting a tour for the council to go with one of the existing facilities and see how it operates. Because I, I know when it was first, we first heard about it, it sounded like this was kind of a new concept, or maybe there was one or two around, but no, there's actually already fourteen up and running successfully. And so probably the one run by Port Gamble or Port Scullum Jamestown. Thank you. Was probably the most likely candidate to tour, and it has to be outside their treatment hours, just for hip of eye concerns of mine, but just know that that was something we discussed so that we could see, actually see it, not just talk about it theoretically.
I might add, Mayor, the, there's an adjoining article that we just got or touched on at the last council meeting, the tribe's acquisition of Kitsap OBGYN facilities here in the county, which were directly threatened with closure because of the financial liability and costs. It was not operable. And so with the tribe having bought Kitsap OBGYN, the laws are entirely different regarding a tribe and legal liability than it is in the private sector. And so that is one of the fundamental criteria on the acquisition, excuse me, of the Saquamish tribe, of the Kitsap OBGYN facilities up and down the county. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Stern. Now I have the honor to do something, a couple pretty cool things. So first of all, we have Ms. Pauls Bow here visiting us this evening. And Eliana, would you like to step up, would you like to step up to the podium? I have a present for you. And this is something that we do every year. And it is the key to the city. It says, Ms. Eliana, sorry, I apologize. Ms. Eliana Robinson, 2025, Ms. Pauls Bow, a key to our hearts with appreciation and gratitude. This young woman has been a remarkable Ms. Pauls Bow. She has been all over with so many different events. Just recently, she accompanied me at Yule Fest. We have this tradition at Yule Fest, which is Ms. Pauls Bow and I walk in the parade. We try to get at the end. At this time, we got in the middle. I don't know exactly how that happened, but we were right in the middle of the parade, and we walk up during Yule Fest. But you are at all the events, and you do such a wonderful job for our community. I just wanted to, first of all, present this to you, and I want to give you a hug. And I want to say thank you for everything you've done. Appreciate it. If you'd like to say a couple of words to the council, go ahead.
Hi, everybody. My name is Eliana Robinson, and I've been Ms. Pauls Bow for the past year. It has been a magical journey, and coming into this, I didn't really know what to expect. But as soon as I was put in the position, I was welcomed warm in arms, and the community here is incredible. Everything that I have done following with her has been so much fun, and I have been blessed to do everything that I have. And being presented with this today is something that I will cherish for the rest of my life. And I just want to say thank you for keeping up the magic that is in the city. It's nowhere else. Every event that I've done everywhere else has lacked that little bit of magic that Pauls Bow truly has, and a part of it is due to you. You are an incredible person, and being able to work this long beside you has been so much fun. So thank you. Thank you.
Actually, do we do something else?
Sure, sure.
Can we go up here like him? You bet. Whatever you want, Mayor. Sure. Can you guys scooch? I mean, come on. All of our women, we will miss you terribly, and we're excited for you too, but, but Becky, we're gonna miss you terribly.
Thank you so much. Yeah, it's super heavy.
Eliana, thank you for your support of the Veterans Day Parade, too. You marched in that parade, too.
One of the things that I do for the Ms. Pauls Bow and the scholarship group that Michelle puts together is I go and speak to the girls, all of them that are running for various titles within the community. And we go down to Maynard's, and we spend kind of the morning with them and talk and explain that kind of the power of being a young woman and, you know, the responsibilities that come with that power. And how many years have I been doing that, Michelle? Yeah, quite a few years, but anyway, they're all wonderful young women, and it's a, it's a real honor to work with the group. So thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay, next thing. Recognition of Kevin McFarland after, Kevin, my God, twenty-nine years, twenty-nine years. Want to come up?
So, Mayor and Council, if you've not had the pleasure of meeting and working with Kevin McFarland, we have, and we just wanted to bring to your attention a little bit of the highlights over I had to even sum up twenty-nine years in like bullets, but the first thing I wanted to start with is a quote from a farmer in Canada, Nelson Henderson. And he states that "The true meaning of life is to plant trees under whose shade you do not expect to sit." That is absolutely the best summation of Kevin that I can even think of. So that's why I wanted to start with that. But Kevin has been, first of all, he's been here since the Tree Board has been here. He's an inaugural member of the Pauls Bow Tree Board. He's been a guiding force behind our city's master tree management plan, our master public tree management plan, which was adopted in 2003. He's had some visionary leadership in the planting and planting of Nelson Park, Pauls Bow Street Park, and all of our parks, really. That's just to name a few places. He's, he contributed to the city's first urban forestry element of the comprehensive plan back in 2008. He has championed our significant trees of Pauls Bow Initiative, so honoring some of our legacy trees and highlighting them. Wonderful educator and advocate, offering annual classes and presentations on tree care, selection, and safety, talking to kids, anything you name it. He completed Pauls Bow's first tree inventory, laying the groundwork for future stewardship. He is a trusted advisor to city staff across departments. I've got Nicole here from Planning, ensuring that thoughtful tree risk assessments and sustainable development are met. And then, of course, he's had some compassionate support to citizens honoring loved ones through our tree dedication program. So Kevin, I just wanted to say that your work has left a lasting canopy of care,
That's good.
knowledge and beauty over our community, and I just wanted to thank you for growing Pauls Bow's future one tree at a time. I know Nicole wanted to one tree at a time. I know Nicole wanted to say something and then we have a little presentation.
I did not prepare anything because I was asked about 30 minutes to do this ago. But I will say that this says a lot about Kevin, that our department, the planning department, is devastated that he will no longer be with us. We adore Kevin. He's been great to work with. He's always available when we say, there's this thing and there's this thing and I don't know how to do this. And he figures it out and it's so helpful to have someone with that expertise and is so kind and doesn't make us feel like we're silly. So the new arborists will have a lot to live up to because Kevin has been amazing. And we are, like I said, when we found out, we were devastated and we're still recovering and we're going to be mourning for a while. So, but thank you for all the years. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, a few words, Kevin. I don't know if you remember this, but way back, I don't even think I was on the council yet. Maybe I was just on the council. I asked you to come out and take a look at my old maple tree on my property. And even at that meeting, I recognized, I thought, this guy really knows his stuff, okay? He is really, really good. And you have helped guide this city in, in the right direction to understand the retention of trees and the importance of green spaces in our community. And, you know, I really lay that at your feet. It's been, it was you. And, you know, how many can we retain? How do we retain? How do we make the developers retain more? You know, what's a dangerous tree? What has to go? And, you know, how do we plant back when we have to take one out? How many Arbor Days have we done? How many where we planted a tree here and there for Rob Park and Centennial Park? And I mean, you've been a real fixture in Paulsbow and I'm, I'm gonna really miss you. You've been, you've made Paulsbow a better place. And I mean, that's, I think that that's the best compliment I can possibly give you. You've made it, you've made it a better place. So we have just a small token. It's not nearly what you're worth. But I just once again want to say thank you for all your hard work. So I'm gonna give this to you, okay?
Kevin McFarland, arborist and founding tree board member from 1996 to 2025, presented in recognition of your dedicated service and leadership. Thank you for all that you have done for the city of Paulsbow. And as I said, you made us a better place.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Do you want to say something here?
Sure, sure. Thank you, Mayor Erickson. It's been a great pleasure working all these years with the city and staff, citizens, everyone involved in this, this area. It went quick, actually. I was surprised. And when Rachel was reading off some of those years and things, I was like, oh yeah, that's right, that's right. But Paulsbow is a wonderful community. The people here are very, very special. I've, I've just, I've just enjoyed it. I can't say enough about this area and, and, you know, that's why I was always available and it was around to help because I just, it's a very special community and, and it's, it's just wonderful to see how it just has grown, you know, physically and also through taking care of its urban forest. So I'm glad to be part of it.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Stern.
I hate to admit this, but I remember your hiring under Mitch Mitchison in the original tree board. So all I want to say, channeling a few of those original members who are now gone, like Phil Lockhart and the others, I know they'd want to look down tonight and deeply thank you for the work you've done to sustain the vision. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other comments? Thank you so much. You'll be missed, Kevin. You'll be missed. Okay, now we're on to board commissions and outside agency reports. Anyone?
We, we had the 305 Committee last week, which Councilor Stern and I kind of tag teamed. I did the first half and he did the second half. I ducked out. I was, I was touring the Recovery Resource Center with Kim and some guests. Pretty much, it was just a kind of a roll-up rehab of where the, where things are and everything that's been being worked on is pretty much done and buttoned up with the exception of Day Road. Day Road still remains the, the project to do and the project that has funding issues. And so that was probably the majority of the conversation, certainly what I heard up to my point. And then Ed took over and Diane and Josh were there and heard the whole conversation. So if we need any technical smarter comments, they'll provide them.
So a quick remark, Mayor. It's a frustrating situation for the city of Bainbridge Island and its residents that the Day Road, which is the project everyone put their effort into, identified as a priority, is short a few million dollars while the island, the high school road was prioritized by the state with nobody's input, is in a different silo of money and will not be moved off that target. I had breakfast with Representative Nance and he remarked about the siloing that takes place in Olympia and the relative unresponsiveness about the priority of the program, how it was developed and the lack of public input.
I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna bite on this. And the reason why is we stopped that funding at PSRC. Well, I purposely pulled it. We pulled the funding and talked to the, the, the folks at Bainbridge Island. And they said, no, we wanted to go ahead for the High School Road Roundabout. And so, you know, they chose this. I, I don't understand. They could have rechanneled that money and put it towards the Day Road intersection and had a roundabout at Day Road, which is the big backup point on the island, okay? I do not know how a roundabout is gonna work at High School Road when they have the ferry backups. How's that gonna work? I mean, they have ferry, ferry traffic that backs clear up into that intersection. What are they gonna do with the roundabout there? So I, I, they had an opportunity to do that. The representatives from Bainbridge Island, then they chose not to do it. So that's the other side of that story.
Well, and, and I have yet to hear from Wazna. They say it's based on traffic safety, but I don't know that they've ever given us statistics to support that, that that intersection and that length of 305 is truly more dangerous than between Paulsbow and Kingston. Unless you consider, you don't look at Bond Road, you look at it as two separate roads. And I think that's what they're doing. They're looking at it as separating those two state roads and then taking the statistics from each and saying, oh, well, they're lower. But if you combine them into Bond Road, which is truly one road ferry terminal to our intersection, I, I just don't understand how they can say that that road, that's more dangerous, but we'll keep pushing on it.
I agree. I know it's really frustrating, guys. Thank you. I appreciate you meeting with the 305 people. I mean, with Bainbridge. And we need to keep working on the road and we need to, we need to work on some of our own intersections too on 305. So, all right. Any other board and commission reports? Go ahead.
Just a quick update. Elected council member, Michael Fitzpatrick and myself went down to lovely Gig Harbor for the AWC elected officials training. It was nice to do that in person instead of online like I originally did when I joined. It was great to meet all the other elected officials from around the area and AWC is excellent resource. I'm always impressed with the quality of their work and the materials they provide and the quizzes they give us and the way they encourage our conversation and thinking on different matters. So I just want to compliment that. And then, and MSRC as well. So I just wanted to do a little shout out there.
Mr. Stern, go ahead.
Question for Mr. Tabor. I attended any number of regional meetings this week and I was approached by two separate elected officials. Who's the tall, thin guy who attended the Gig Harbor training? And I said, well, one, it must be Councilman Tabor. And they said, he is quite the comedian. He had everybody cracked up in that room. Mr. Tabor, what was this all about? Because I'm curious.
You'll have to send that question to my city council email. It was just, yeah, just, just cracking jokes.
Good job.
Any other board and commission reports? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we're gonna go on to city administrator and department comments. Rob, what's up?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Just wanted to remind you that this Friday, we will actually have our monthly parking open house. It'll be at 9:00 AM here in Chambers. For those who would like to get a little bit more information, it's, it's all part of our very iterative process of learning and trying to adapt as we go along. To that end, do know that we have learned that there's a possibility of a gathering slash protest sometime on Friday. Could be in conjunction with the open house at 9:00 AM with folks that may have a differing opinion about parking. But we all have free speech.
Rob, I had it down on my calendar, 8:00 AM. It's in fact 9:00 AM in this room.
Correct.
Thank you.
Uh huh. And then after the council gave the go-ahead for a day pass solution, just wanted to circle back as council member Lipton mentioned in all you did, that anyone who is downtown for Yule Fest knows it was chock-a-block, it was standing room only, and there was no parking in town. And there were a lot of people who wanted to stay a long time. So we did a trial run for the day passes. It was pretty successful. I would say for a go that we had 97 individuals who took advantage of the day pass option on Saturday and 13 on Sunday. And I have a big shout out to the PD who helped make it possible for the signs to go out and to be picked up, knowing that we had one atmospheric river after another or wind, et cetera, that it was really helpful to make sure that we had those signs available for folks. And just finally, as a reminder for the public that tomorrow, the 11th, City Hall will be closed to the public for services between 11:15 and 1:15 for our annual employee appreciation luncheon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gelder. Okay, who's, who's up next? Department Hens?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll go. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I'm always a little jealous when Jeff shows slides and I have nothing to contribute. So this evening I have a few things to discuss. Thanks to some really expert help from the engineering department, our kitchen build at the recovery center is well underway. We're working with a terrific contractor that may just finish this project before our anticipated timeline. We hope that we have things done before Christmas. What you see on the top is a new opening in the hall when you walk into the recovery cafe that allows people to look directly into the kitchen and food to be passed back and forth from the kitchen to the cafes. The picture on the bottom is just a snapshot of what things are looking like today in the kitchen. The oven that you see that's closest to your screen is actually the result of community donations. People have been very generous with us in our food drive and now our equipment drive. So this cafe is really feeling like a pretty wonderful community project that's coming to fruition. Wanted to share some numbers with you about people that are using the recovery cafe. As you recall, we opened our doors in August. During that first month, 41 unique individuals used the cafe. Some of those folks were members, some of them were visitors. Ever since that opening month, we've been serving about 50 people per month, but realize that those 50 people, many of them are coming in every day for educational activities, for support groups, for meals, for camaraderie. So it's a busy center and I suspect when that kitchen build is finished, we'll, we'll be increasing those numbers even more. When that kitchen is completed, we will move to the next phase of that recovery cafes development. And we want to celebrate that development with a grand opening. We'll be opening our doors to the community on January 22nd from 4:00 to 6:00. Council is, is very much encouraged to come, just if you want to attend, if you'd communicate with Rhiannon to avoid quorum issues. We'd be grateful. Mayor Erickson, you are so integral to this project. I hope you'll come in your retirement and say hello. Mayor, to be stern, we would be so honored if you'd cut the ribbon for us and help us kick off the celebration. Thank you so much. You'll be receiving a copy of this in your inboxes in an Outlook calendar invite. Just wanted you to save the date and to be aware today. I've been with the city about nine years and I'm constantly learning about financial processes and getting a little bit better at understanding how systems work. Thanks to the toolage of Rob and Debbie, I realized that many of my contract extensions for running the recovery cafe and the recovery center don't require council approval, which helps us streamline our processes of staff. But I did want to use my council comment time tonight to let you know who we are contracting with in 2026, both for your awareness and the public's awareness. Kitsap Homes of Compassion has been a partner to the H3 Department for years and years. We're going to continue to work with them to provide mental health, case management, housing and benefit navigation at the recovery center. Just to jog your memory on this particular contract, there is no cost to those services. We swap office space for these mental health benefit and housing navigation services, which is an incredible benefit to the city as a whole and our members. And we're very happy that that relationship will continue next year. We also work with an organization called AMFM Healthcare. They provide us with a substance use disorder professional that does vocational coaching and anger management classes. It's been one of the most popular things that we do at the recovery center. We'll be extending that contract in the amount of $33,000 in 2026. A small but mighty contract that we have is with the Blue Bills, who as you know, has been providing home repairs and weatherization upgrades for residents of Paulsbow for the past couple of years, thanks to the city council's support. We will continue to fund them at the amount of $15,000 for 2026. The Nelson House, as you know, is run by Gambit Recovery. That agreement is active through 2027, so no need to do a revision. I'll be coming back to council along with the executive director of Coffee Oasis to talk about the Coffee Oasis lease extension, talk about some changes in rental costs to match market rate prices and get guidance from you about that continued relationship. Everything that you see here is included in the current H3 budget, so there's nothing for council to approve. Again, I just want to bring this to your attention so you know who we're contracting with and that these relationships that we've been building over time are continuing. One other item to flag for you, as we're getting to the end of the year and taking care of H3 business. Again, part of my learning curve was the realization after talking to Kitsap Public Health District that our practice for the past five or six months of accepting food donations to save city costs in the cafe was legitimate as long as we weren't running our own kitchen. Now that we're about to run our own kitchen at the cafe, it's not proper for us to receive donations of food unless we're partnering with a nonprofit organization that can serve as our sponsor.
Who told you this?
Kitsap Public Health District.
That makes no sense to me. Have you gotten a legal opinion?
It's actually in the WAC.
In the WAC?
Yep. This will be coming to council as a business agenda item next week. And when that is presented to council, there's information about the WAC and I can run through some of the legal language around it. Even though it caught me off guard, I'm so happy to say that our neighbor at the recovery center, Empowered Church, has been supporting our operations since we moved into that building. When they learned about our need to have a nonprofit sponsor, they offered their services to work with us for no cost to help us accept food donations. So I wanted just to take my little bit of last time today to publicly acknowledge Empowered Church for being an excellent neighbor to the city. They're willing to step up and be a sponsor to us. I'll be coming to council on the business agenda next meeting to talk about what a whole harmless agreement looks like that our city attorney recommends in order to move that partnership forward. So happy to answer more questions when it comes to the business agenda.
No, I, I, I just, this is the first I've heard of it, but I know, I can understand why the WAC exists. I can't, it's just sometimes these things appear nonsensical to me, okay? It's like, you, you're trying to solve a problem, so you take a bulldozer to it rather than just tweak it. You know what I mean? It's crazy.
Mayor, what I have learned from you over the years is when an obstacle comes in the way, you find partners and try to solve it. So Empowered Church has, has helped us tremendously. So thank you.
Thanks, Kim. Any questions for Kim? Okay, who's next?
The mayor, council, committee members, good evening. Three things to celebrate. So the first to celebrate is the North Kitsap Senior Citizen Center had their 56th anniversary yesterday. And I think a couple of council members, Councilmember Newell was there, Marylex Stern was there. If I'm missing anybody, I'm sorry. I came right after people came. But it was really neat to see about 35, 40 folks down there celebrating. And we have a really strong partnership with them on our senior connections newsletter and sharing services. So we did a wonderful outreach and we had some of our senior, senior task force committee members there as well. So all in all, really fantastic. And they had a donut wall. And if you've never seen a donut wall, they work with sly's and they literally put donuts up on a And they had a donut wall. And if you've never seen a donut wall, they worked with sly's and they literally put donuts up on a wall and you got anyways. I'm celebrating the donut wall as well. The second thing to celebrate is the winter catalog for Parks and Rec is out and we have forty three new classes. That's really incredible. We've well offer over twelve hundred in a year, but forty three new ones is really great. And I just want to say a huge shout out to our Parks and Rec team and all our partners and volunteers for putting those on. It takes an enormous amount of work to do this several times every year and to make sure that we're engaging with our community. And the last celebration is FEMA training. And I am excited, but it's three days of incident response. And luckily I am joined by our chief of police, our deputy chief and one of our sergeants, Sean Zeeman. And we uh, have done day one and we got two more days uh, of it, but it's pretty great to see other jurisdictions there and what we're learning.
Thank you, Jeff. Diane?
Um, one more thing to look forward to in the billing packet for the month of December, there will be an invitation to participate in a survey for solid waste. That's about your garbage, what kind of garbage services you like, what you'd like to see in the future and um, what's important to our citizens. Uh, will be asked in the survey. It's only fifteen questions. It's very, very quick. Um, but we will use that as part of our um, context for the negotiations and advertisement to bid for outsourcing garbage services. So I'd encourage everyone to participate when they get that. Um, it will also be announced in our newsletter and a couple other methods, including Facebook, but you can look for that in the next week or two. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other department heads? I'm looking out in the audience. Oh, Chief.
Councilor Mayor, I just want to give you a a brief update on our electronic enforcement program. Uh, statistics for November, we had over three thousand events between our three camera systems. Uh, of those events, we actually issued only eleven hundred and fifty citations. And I do, I do want to highlight, uh, it's been an issue on in social media, some other platforms, the right turn uh, from three oh five onto bond. Those are all viewed by a person who reviews them. And we dismissed eight hundred and eighty nine right turns because they did not cause a safety concern. There was no one in the crosswalk. There was clear uh, pathway for the vehicle to proceed. So we're we're looking at that very closely, but even so, we did issue over eleven hundred citations. So we're we're hoping that number comes down. That's still far too many people that are running that red light. And um, we're we'll continue the program, but I'll keep you updated as it progresses.
Thanks, Chief. Any questions for Chief?
Well.
Go ahead.
I have to say, you know, the number of people that that insist that we're not really serious about this because we only have the camera in that one direction. And my response is let's work on getting a camera in the other direction um, to to challenge that assertion because I I would be happy if we had one in all four directions on that intersection, quite frankly. So. Um, so yeah, eleven hundred in one direction proves, I think all four directions could use it. I mean, folks, i- it's not for money. It's that that's how unsafe people are being.
Okay, any questions for Chief Harding? Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Brooks, go ahead.
All right. Well, I want to bring it back up to some fun. Uh, we um, now own pollsbow.gov. So that's a big deal. We will be sending communication out in January about shifting us. Our email address is over to pollsbow.gov. We'll be working on the website as well. We will not lose cityofpoolsbow.com. Um, all those years of having that, we're going to maintain that for as long as for for forever, basically. Um, and um, just just in case anyone needs to know, it's dot gov gives us a level of security that we don't currently have. It is the norm for agencies like ours, et cetera, et cetera. So any questions, feel free to reach out.
Good work, Brooks. Thank you. Thank you very much. Questions for Brooks? Okay, uh, as far as I can tell, that's the end of the city administrative department head comments. We're moving on to the consent agenda. All matters listed within the consent agenda have been distributed to each member of the city council for reading and study and are considered to be routine. Remembering that there's been a slight modification to uh, uh, eight I that's in your field folder and you approved the amended agenda. So is there a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items A through I as amended?
And then through L.
Oh, excuse me. A through L.
A through L. I as amended, okay? Is there, and Rick, second? We have a motion and a second. Any further questions or conversations? Seeing and hearing none. Mr. Tabor?
Tabor, I.
Noel, I.
Live doll.
McVeigh, I.
Eckert, I.
Stern, I.
Thank you. Now we're on to the business agenda. The first item is the PSC night work request, and this is Mr. Washburn. I want to say Doug, but that's because I've been dealing with, never mind. Go ahead.
Good evening, council members. Good evening, Madam Mayor. All right. So engineering is here tonight to request approval for some night work up on North Viking Avenue. Um, this is on behalf of Puget Sound Energy, so I'll talk a little bit about what they're doing and then if we have any questions, we can go from there. So the work for this permit is the removal of one power pole transformer on one of their electricity poles. They will be replacing it as part of the same job. Will probably take about eight hours and there's a four hour power outage associated with this job. Um, the power outage will affect three businesses up there, which are all on one parcel, which are these three businesses right here. That's Northern Rentals and then I think it's Acme Valley Ice Cream, if I remember correctly. And this is the work area that they'll be working in. So just taking off one of their transformers here, replacing it all within about eight hours. Our general conditions of approval will apply, so seven PM to seven AM work hours for one night of night work and, you know, as usual, all of their customers that are affected by that will be notified at least two hours in advance of the job start. So in this case, that will just be those three businesses on that parcel that I highlighted. So at this point, I'd welcome any questions. Um.
Pretty straightforward. Any questions? Go ahead.
Um, are they going to be notified prior to that or or just a two hour notice is just that we're about to start?
Uh, sorry, two weeks in advance.
Okay, I was gonna say, just thinking ice cream, two hours might not be enough.
Yes, no, no time at all. Um, yeah, PSC is a really robust outreach program for things like this. And generally, they notify their customers of planned outages. Two weeks in advance is what they do.
Okay, so any questions regarding this? I'm hearing and seeing none. Um, do we have a motion?
Uh, I'll be happy to make a motion, Mayor.
Okay.
Uh, move to approve the night work requests for transformer replacement by Puget Sound Energy on Viking Avenue.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or conversations? Seeing and hearing none. Mr. Tabor?
Tabor, I.
Noel, I.
Live doll.
McVeigh, I.
Eckert, I.
Stern, I.
Thank you, council. And now on to, thank you very much. And now we're on to uh, a letter to Washington State legislators, a remedy for every rights violation. This is Mr. Tabor.
Yeah, Mayor, um, remind the council, um, being that I am a federal employee, I'm recusing myself in this conversation, so I'll be stepping down to the lights.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Eckert. Okay.
So Mayor, first I'd like to um, kind of address the administrative of for this word. So I think I'd like to send the letter in January so that uh, Michael Fitzpatrick, who's expressed interest in signing it, can also be added on it after having been sworn in.
Okay.
And then um, so I'm just gonna send an email to the city clerks with you and Rob Gelder on it with a list of who wants to be on it. And then um, and then just noting that it can be sent in the first week of January. Does that sound like the correct administrative steps?
I don't have a problem with that at all. Counsel, what's your opinion on that? This will go in January?
Yeah, first week of January to send the letter out.
Okay.
It's fine with me.
Okay.
And that'll give me time because Pam expressed interest in being on the letter as well, but since she's not here, I'd like to at least get an email confirmation that she wants to be on the uh, the email or on the letter, excuse me. Now moving on to the letter itself, um, first I'd like to say that one thing I really love about this council is we disagree. This is the first item that I've brought to council that's my own and it's really important to me. And I appreciate my colleagues who agreed to signing it, but I also really appreciate and greatly respect my colleagues who disagree and who for one reason or another that um, don't want to sign. I think it's really important that the people see that their council can disagree and I really appreciate everyone in our department, when we do agree, which we do often. There's no rubber stamping here. We all have different minds and thought processes and we all arrive at different conclusions. So the growth of knowledge depends entirely on disagreement. So thank you all for um, for that. And then just regarding the document itself, um, the central principle, no official is above the constitution, transcends, I think, everything. So that's what brought me to this. Um, and then just a little background, just final time, a little brief history, very short. In eighteen seventy one, Congress passed US Code one nine eight three, which allowed people to sue state and local officials for violating their constitutional rights. Congress never created a similar statute for their federal officers. So in nineteen seventy one, the Supreme Court recognized this, that there was like five FBI agents violated someone's rights on their property. And the Supreme went all the way to Supreme Court and they said, wow, we should have a remedy for this. So we're allowing courts to create a remedy. And then over the years since nineteen seventy one, courts were began doing that less and less. Finally, in two thousand twenty two, in a Supreme Court case, they said that it's not the court's place to be passing these, something that should be a statute that should have been passed by Congress. So they're pulling back for that reasoning and that's why this has been diminished and no longer exist. So the concept here is that the state would create something and it would get further adjudicated, putting pressure on Congress to to fill this gap. And that's why uh, it's here today. And yeah, that's it. So so far I have in um, terms of who's interested in signing, I have myself, Britt Livedall, Pam Crow and Michael Fitzpatrick. Um, is there anyone else whose name would like to be added to the letter?
I have a question if I could.
Go ahead, Mr. Tabor.
Um, I I had um, requested that the letter be um, reviewed by our city attorney. I appreciate knowing that it has been. Um, our advanced material said that the city attorney had some modifications to the letter. Since it wasn't red lined, I'm just wondering if somebody can characterize for me what those changes were?
Um, I can uh, go ahead and do that. Um, there was no concern for the red flags for the city itself. And then there the um, the recommendations were purely thinking it would uh, with the hopes of adding more context. And um, I disagreed with that, so I just chose not to take that. It was adding more court cases and explaining those court cases. But I think that's, I don't want, I didn't want to get too into the legal history in the letter itself, so I left those edits out. I felt like it didn't fit the vibe of the letter personally.
Okay.
But I appreciate the, I I appreciated the the feedback from our city attorney.
Okay. Um, so just so I'm clear, you you got some advice from the city attorney. It was contextual, but you disagreed with including it and so it has not been added. Is that correct?
Correct. Um, and I will note that they they both our city attorney and Doug Newell pointed out that there was a grammar mistake in the first paragraph, which has been fixed.
Okay.
This evening, Doug Newell with his keen eye pointed out another grammar mistake that I will uh, request be corrected in in the email.
Okay, all right. Thank you for the clarification.
Absolutely.
Okay, um, counsel, what you'd like to do with this?
I just, sorry.
Mr. Newell?
Um, for those of you that that put stuff in front of me, sometimes you understand that I have questions. Um, I guess just this goes in the context of this from the standpoint of what we're doing. It's on City of Poolsbow Office of City Council Letterhead. I'm used to letterhead uh, people signing on those letters being part of that office. Um, if I look on the back of it, there's an endorsement list, not a signature list. And it talks to elected and appointed officials. I guess I, I'm struggling with what's elected versus appointed that are inside the office of city council. And also, is it appropriate for somebody who's not part of the office of city council to actually be a potential signator on the letter?
Um, yeah, great points. Uh, well, I was appointed when I drafted this letter. So I was me. I was the appointed official. Um, I'm now elected, but uh, didn't know if, you know, if someone would retire last minute and then be replaced. Uh, hopefully not, but.
Okay.
And then.
Appreciate that clarity. I just.
And then, yeah, I just included because um, Luke Garrett is the the attorney who basically co-co wrote this and provided all of the expertise on the, you know, legislative and legal. Um, so I feel like appropriate to include him on the letter.
I have a comment. We have, uh, as far as precedent goes, Doug, Noel, this Doug, um, it occurs to me that we have drafted letters where we had other signatories who were who were officials or people involved in other jurisdictions and other organizations sign on to letters. I mean, I can't name them specifically, but I think there have been.
Well, we did recently with the letter regarding the Duralik Vessel Act.
Right.
The other signatures were government officials and we talked about it as being a joint letter. That's, I just, I s- just when I look at this and appreciate that, is there a time where we've had a citizen sign on to one of our letters? And is that something that we are open to doing in the future if somebody brings us that they want to sign a letter and have us join it and put it on our letterhead? I, it's some of the mechanics there of
Yeah.
Who's signing this? Is it us, the seven of us, or is it the community signing it? That's.
I mean, I, it seems like maybe the distinction in this case is that Mr. Garrett was and and yeah, and an advisory role on this matter. So I mean, I guess that's where it's more relevant.
Yeah.
Just in citizens, but.
And I appreciate dialogue. I guess I struggle with it because we don't have our city attorney. Would not be. She's commented on this too. Does it make sense for her to sign? I just, it just seems into the the dialogue of who signs these things and what's the weight of it? Endorsement list, are we going to be looking for other endorsements?
So so the.
I guess.
Yeah, strategically.
Trying to read the words.
Sure. Strategically, this is just a point in time. And then this, the actual intent of this letter will leave this and go be taken up by a higher office than myself, and then it'll be on their letterhead. Um, so essentially, I'm including this because the last paragraph mentions Mr. Garrett and how he can be used as a resource. So this is, I I think just, you know, a request and I think that's why it's structured so. It's not, it's not intended to be the letter itself, the the basis for the action, the actions. It's just calling for, hey, would you look into creating legislation that would fix this? And then they would, you know, I would in, I would lobby and encourage and be a resource for our state reps to to do that, move forward on that. And that would be on their letterhead and using their resources and their knowledge and their expertise. So this is simply a request from.
Okay, so let me, let me see if I can, I can kind of isolate the questions here. Um, first of all, does the council as a as a whole want to sign on to this letter? In other words, we pass a motion, you guys pass a motion and you endorse this letter. Okay, and if you don't want to do that, then I I I'm do we want to put it on the city council letterhead? I mean, what you're saying with the city council is that the city council has endorsed this letter. So I would expect that there would be a motion forthcoming saying, please go move forward with this and you're all going to sign it. Or, I mean, isn't that what the letterhead says? Right. Okay, so.
Can I, as a city councillor, not send a letter using this letterhead by myself independently? Can I, as a city councillor, not send a letter using this letterhead by myself independently of the council?
Yeah, I've never seen that happen before. You can send a letter from, I mean, maybe I'm wrong, but you use the city council letterhead and says city council. It generally means the collective city council.
Sure.
So, or am I wrong? I, I don't, I don't remember discussing this question in all the years I've been here.
I guess my, my view of it would be, um, that it's on Office of City Council letterhead. Um, it would be something that has been approved by the city council or we, we are, we are we are providing our seal of approval, if you will. So I would have a problem sending it unless it has been, uh, approved by the unanimously by council. I, I think there are alternatives, uh, it seems to me, Mr. Tabor, as a council member could have a piece of letterhead.
Yeah.
Um, you know, that, I would agree with sending Doug could certainly send something out like that. And that might be more appropriate, um, I think, given, um, given the action.
Yeah, I'm amenable to that. I don't think we'll get a unanimous, um, acceptance of this letter, but we'll, I'll go ahead and throw it to a vote. And if it doesn't work out, I'll send it independently on
Yeah.
my own letterhead.
Okay.
And, uh, I'm sorry, Mayor, if I could, um, you know, I, uh, as I, uh, I think said last meeting when we reviewed this, um, I, I appreciate the work Mr. Tabor's put into this, um. I, you know, um, had, had I not known the origins of it, um, um, in terms of, um, coming forward from, uh, the Kitsap County Democratic Party. Um, I, I think I would be more inclined to support it. Um, because I, I, I think it is an important issue. Constitutional rights are always an important issue. But I, I, I just have a hard time accepting the, um, perspective that it is a, um, nonpartisan appeal or communication. Uh, when, uh, I don't believe that's true. So I, I, I'm not going to sign on to the letter. I've given it a lot of thought. Uh, I appreciate, um, um, the work that's gone into it. You don't need me to sign it. You, you can still send it out and it could still have some impact. Um, but, um, I, I'm just not comfortable, um, with, with putting my name on it at this point.
Mayor, may, may I have a, make a suggestion that potentially, um, it's still appropriate for it to go on to city council letterhead. Um, be due to the, the office that those signatories hold, um, as council of members. Um, but perhaps if it's not officially endorsed by the, the body through a motion, the, the letter could be amended at the beginning of the introductory part of it to say that we, the undersigned uh, members of the city council of Polesbow.
Yeah.
Um, do request X, Y, or Z, right? So that it, it basically can uh, convey that it's not an action of council, but by virtue of the role of those signers that they want to elevate this, this topic to our legislature.
So if that's, go ahead.
Yeah, I appreciate that input. I think that would be great if, um, if we could, I can absolutely amend that first sentence and say on behalf of the residents of the community, we, the the endorsed, you know, the signees of the endorsement or Rob, you can help me wordsmith that and then continue the letter. Um, if that's amenable to everybody.
Sounds reasonable to me.
Go, Britt, any other comments? Is it okay?
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, I think that's unamenable. I'm still cautious also because I, I agree with you, Gary. I think this is unfortunately a partisan issue at this standpoint because of the timing of ongoing issues. Not to say that it isn't important. I'm weighing whether or not I should reach out and engage our House of Representative, uh, Emily Randall from the standpoint of signing on. There is a bill in the House that's been introduced. There's about fifteen cosigners on it right now. She is not one currently. Um, but maybe it's something that the U.S. statute, that maybe it's something appropriated the House of Congress. I'm still chewing on this. Part of it is mechanics. The issue's real. It's how do we go forward? What makes sense? And, you know, how do we set ourselves up for maybe not success in the next twelve months, but success in the next ten years? Cause this isn't going to resolve itself. Um.
Okay, so.
Soon.
I'm, I'm hearing that you don't, the, the council's okay with using the letterhead for a selective few council members to put this forward.
Okay.
Okay?
Great.
So if, if that in fact is the case, who's letter, who, is this going to be coming from the city or are we just going to Mr. Tabor put it together? How does that work? Who, how do you want to do this?
Can I mail the letter from with the return address to my mailbox here in the city?
I mean, I think if it's on city council letterhead and, and we can mail it out from the city once we have the signatures from the individuals that would like to sign.
Okay, so then.
And if, I'm sorry, if we could just make sure it's clear that it is not, it's not endorsed by the entire city council. Some, there's, there's going to be some language added. Is that correct, Doug? Is that?
Yeah, it'll, I'll, I can work with Rob on that and we'll make it.
Individual members are approving it.
Okay.
Correct.
All right, so.
We can share the final product with the entire.
Who's going to sign off on to this? Do, do you need those names now?
He, he mentioned that earlier on, but I'm, I will.
Okay, so we have to, all right. Okay, so Rob, do you have enough to work with on this? Okay, I think we're done.
Complicated.
I think we're done.
Thank you all.
Are we, are we done? I think we're done.
I think, thank you, Doug.
All right. Thank you, Doug. Appreciate it. Now let's see. Let's see, this is the time for a meeting break at six twenty-two. How about we reconvene at six thirty? Okay?
Okay, folks, we're starting our workshop now and the first thing we have is the urban canopy assessment presentation and this is Rachel McCornet. And Mr. McFarland and the tree board and go for it, guys.
Well, I can't say welcome because you've already had your, this is already set up. So thank you for having us.
Well, really quick, I just wanted to introduce the board because I had the pleasure of meeting you. So good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Oh, into the microphone. I'm very loud, as you know, so I'll try to. So we have our newest member you met a few weeks ago, Sharon Bynum, John Martin, and of course, you know, Kevin. This is our chairperson for the committee, Jeff Philip, you know, me, and then this is Gail Larson. Gail is actually leaving us after how many?
Fourteen.
Fourteen years on the, on the board. So we're really grateful for her time, but we're very excited to present the results of this urban canopy assessment.
All right. So maybe you folks are aware that, what was it, 2024 and correct me, you guys, if I'm wrong on this, but in 2024, the then chairperson for the tree board, Janice Baumann, put in and along with the tree board members and myself and staff, put in for Washington Department of Natural Resources, Urban and Community Forestry Program grant. And this was what we basically put together was looking at, I guess you could say, the urban forest as a whole. And what, what is the current sort of baseline of, of the coverage and, and, you know, what, what, what is the makeup of it? And where are some of the areas that we may have some concerns about in terms of with the data we find out from this assessment? So anyway, lo and behold, we, we got the grant and.
So this is just background for those of you who aren't familiar with the tree board. Established in 1997 as part of the Arbor Day Foundation. So we're a Tree City USA and part of the obligation to continue that is to have a budget for tree programs and have a tree board or something like it. We are official, officially enacted from the resolution in 2012. And, and all of this, all of what we do is to advise you and the, and the city departments and to be helpful and at your disposal and provide citizen comments back on where we would like to see the city of Paulsville going as far as how we manage our trees. And then we talked about the members that the, the city also has ex officio members, including Jeff and Mike and Kevin. And whoever the new arborist will be, will be filling those gigantic shoes. Or as I said earlier, mud. So yeah, so this is the, our report on the, on the assessment.
Yeah. And so got the grant, obviously through DNR and then with that, Janice is a professor at Western Washington University and she saw an opportunity to also work with students interns to, to help employ them and through the grants, which was a big key part of it. And also again, use new technology to basically assess our urban forest. And so that assessment used GIS data and also basically they would, they used historic aerial imagery and also current and digitized that. And that was a big basis. And we'll look into that here in a minute and how that turned out from basically 1994 to 2024. And so other goals or focus points on this effort was using this analysis to get census track also to assist with equitable decision making, developing recommendations to assist with future updates to the city's urban forest management and maintenance plan. And also, as I mentioned, supporting workforce development through paid internships with WWU students. And basically, what we found out is from 1994 to 2024, we have lost basically around thirty, thirty percent of canopy cover. So one percent a year. Not probably a big surprise to folks, just because the city's developing and growing and, and such. But anyway, we're currently at thirty-six percent overall and some of the other results we found with temperature sensors, this is really cool. They actually put what they call temperature loggers and around, I think it was like a hundred of them around the, around the city. And, and we'll talk about this a bit more, but canopy cover does have a lot of influence or can have a lot of influence on the heat island effect in urban density or urban centers. So anyway, we were, that was some of the information we gleaned from that. But we've got some several slides coming up here where you can see here in the red, that's canopy cover through nineteen ninety-four imagery. And as you would guess, as the years progress, we lose more and more of that canopy through, through new development and, and just loss of trees in, in general. So. It's pretty striking if you folks ever have a time to look at the actual report and kind of flip back through with the photos. You're seeing this up on the screen here, but you can pick out a certain spot, like say where Walmart's located in that area, Olympic College. And look back at ninety-four and I think that was just being cleared or not cleared. And then, you know, fast, you know, you flip back and forth and you're just like, oh yeah, my goodness, my goodness. So these areas, as you would guess, that area in particular, around forest, rock, hill development, and also down south are some of the more, I guess, areas that have more heat from lack of canopy. So anyway, this information here, we got the slide, it shows that. And as you would guess, the hotter is the yellow and so forth and the gradient there. And so this information gives us a good baseline for possibly working into policy goals for retention or protection of existing trees, native trees, native forests, remnant forests, and also new planting opportunities as well, kind of jumping ahead, but. And so we fleshed out some recommendations with the report canopy assessment. The interns put together some recommendations here and timely replanting of areas within where, where tree losses have been identified. Encouraging neighborhood tree plantings of recommended species, floating gardens, that's an interesting name, but it's basically like living, living roofs, living rooftops on, in particular, like carports and apartment complexes or, or in some cases, they may be hanging gardens on vertical walls or new larger islands in parking areas.
So is that similar to what's on part of City Hall?
Yes. Yeah, I forgot about that. Yes. And then offering new community initiatives for planting native species or climate tolerant, climate resilient tree species and developing educational campaigns with public and private partnerships. Also evaluating tree retention policies and protective ordinances and removing invasive species. That sounds interesting in a sense that, for instance, holly or Scotch broom or hennel and blackberry, those actually out compete or muscle out our native trees or even ones that have been planted for that matter. So that's a key thing to actually address in future goals. And then identifying priority areas and parks and, and increased canopy coverage to basically public owned properties as well. And now those were great recommendations from the interns and the school. And then we had our own that we kind of fleshed out ourselves from that information. This would be used, this assessment would be used for updating the public tree master plan. And also help with vision to focus on increasing urban forest canopy, updating the public tree ordinance, create a tree planting plan. And that would be basically laying out like saying parks, this is already, we've already had a plan. Almost like a landscape design, if you will, and have that ready. And in certain years, we can attempt those, those plantings and those goals, create it or update the hazard tree rating system for the city through the ordinance and review and update municipal codes, regulating private development and increase public education of tree value and care and retention. So that's some of the things that we kind of came up with from, from the information that we, we found through the assessment. I kind of went through this quickly, but I'm anticipating some questions.
Yeah. And you know, I would, I would also make note that the city was getting in on the urban forestry efforts thirty years ago when, when Kevin was starting out as arborist. And he had a lot to do with developing that public tree master plan and input into codes and things like that. But it has been twenty, thirty years and the tree board recommends that we begin a review. And we're available and we would love to help with any of the departments that are engaging in reviews of municipal codes of the, of the plans. If we want a tree plan that addresses more than public lands, since public lands are a very small percentage of the total area.
Okay. So we have Doug and then Gary and then Mr. Stern and then Mr. Tabor.
Yeah, just, just for clarification on the results, it looks like our tree cover has been stable over the past twenty years. Pull up point, say from nineteen ninety-four to two thousand four, there's a decrease in fifty-one percent to thirty-three. And then it says the current state is thirty-six percent.
Yeah. So nineteen ninety-four, there was fifty, was it fifty-one percent?
Yep.
Right? And then it went down and you can see in the, on the right.
Go, go, go towards the beginning.
So this one shows a fifty.
Go to the beginning. That one. I'm just trying to re, make sure I understand.
So thirty percent decreases from fifty-one to thirty-three percent. That's a thirty percent decrease.
And that was in two thousand four.
No, that was from nineteen ninety-four to two thousand four was down to thirty-three percent.
And now we're at thirty-six. That would imply we've been level for the past twenty years.
Went back up. So you'll see in these slides.
Yep.
On the right-hand side is the key blown up. So you have fifty-one percent, thirty-three percent.
It looks like we stabilized.
Uh, and, and then it went back down. So it's gone back down to the thirty-five percent. We actually discussed this at our tree board meeting that with the recent developments that are going on, that it would be beneficial to reevaluate this in a couple of years with all of the new residential development.
So I guess what I'm just trying to get to is understanding and I didn't stare at every one of those numbers I read ahead. But I, I saw the summary and I was like going, is our policies got to stabilize? If not, you know, what would be the ideal tree coverage for us? And is there a different way to do development? Because our development right now is really about concentrating development inside the UGA. That is as a county and a state and leaving the tree canopy outside of our UGA's. Is there a different way to think about this to do different development inside, maybe make our UGA bigger so we can leave more trees? I guess just from the standpoint of, you know, I can look at all the numbers, but what do we do now?
Kevin actually brought this up at our tree board meeting on Monday, the like for urban areas, the ideal or what, what places are shooting for.
Yeah. So for instance, with the national averages, basically between, and this is taken in all, all, all the cities within the country from places in the middle of the Midwest and prairie lands to heavily forested areas like ourselves, but the national average is between thirty and thirty-five percent. So we're, we're actually pretty good at, at the current rate. But we do foresee, and like we mentioned, we'd like to see us revisit the canopy assessment for a percentage cover and maybe two or three or four years from now to see where we're at. So, so yeah, we're, we're at a pretty decent number. It would be nice to, to maintain that and possibly even increase that in, into the future.
Okay. So we have Gary and then Ed and then Doug Tabor.
Uh, thank you all for coming tonight. Thank you for your service. I served on planning commission before I joined council. So I know the commitment and the time that you folks devote to this and much appreciated. So I noted on the recommendations from you compared to the interns that there's a point here, review and update municipal codes regulating private development. We do that all the time. We just had a, quite an extensive, a couple of presentations from Nicole from planning, updates to the critical areas ordinance, a lot of really deep work went into that. We've made some changes there. So I'm just wondering, do you have some specific ideas of what municipal codes in regulations of private development that you would like to see changed? Or is that just sort of a blanket kind of, don't forget about it?
So we, we discussed this as well, that we don't have, like, we haven't done that assessment yet. Review the codes as the tree board and we'd be happy to make that one of our projects. As an example, for what, one of the things that we saw is we went out to one of the new developments, what was the name of that, Avery? Is that right?
That's the one off, the new up of Johnson Creek that's going.
Audrey Estates, right? So what, one of the things that we learned when we went there is that by code, the developer was allowed to designate trees for retention that were in wetlands that were alder.
Basically, yeah.
Yeah. So they're, they're old or alder, they're, they're not the types of trees that are going to last a long time. They're in wetlands that couldn't be developed anyway. So this developer was able to use trees in an area that they couldn't develop as tree return retention requirements. Other municipalities don't allow that.
Yeah.
So you have to retain trees that are in other usable lands, not basically acquire wetlands so that you can meet some code that allows you to use wetlands as a tree return retention area.
Okay.
So that's an example, but there's more to be done.
Yeah, appreciate the example. Thank you.
Um, Ed and then Doug Tabor.
So first, just looking back on your history and thank everyone here. I still remember when Mayor Mitchison's started the tree board with pride and added the Tree City sign to what was the corridor champions, which was every high school student and team that had ever won an award on the regional or state level, and it lined all of highway three oh five as you entered town. And I remember the planting of the tree city with a great deal of pride until DOT ordered the city to remove all the champion signs because they didn't have permission to be in the right of way and were acting as a distraction clutter, whatever it was. But anyway, it causes me to remember some of the legacy items under Kevin's watch. With that said, I do have a suggestion for a specific work item. We've been reviewing our shoreline, which we have to do every year, I think, mayor. And we had planning staff here, specifically Nicole and Heather. And there was the question of DNR in a, what appears to be a conflicting code item. And that is that you want to encourage public access of the shoreline as a legacy for the residents. On the other hand, you're not allowed to touch the vegetation canopy. And what we've have happening is a lot of what you cited, Jeff, the Alders, Himalayan blackberry, which are all invasive species are hindering or not, or now blocking public access, but we're doing it with non-native vegetation. And there must be a way and there are avenues to appeal to DNR with best scientific methodology and other criteria. And help amend this for the city of Paulsville is not, if not for the state as a whole, because the two DNR goals are mutually exclusive. If we're going to retain public access, which is important, a lot of people can't afford, but they don't have the view, they don't have the waterfront and they count on the city and our parks and shoreline access for that amenity. And yet the other component of that DNR code conflicts directly with that because soon they're blocked from access. So that would be one item and we did cite it to planning department to look at in the new year as they have the capacity. So that may be for the following annual review, there's some innovation there that we can take the lead on.
That's a great idea. Thank you. Yeah, we, we've actually talked also about the county road, something over on the west side.
County road.
Old County Road, nice waterfront area, not really, but lots of Himalayan blackberry and yeah.
Yeah. So the state's at conflict too. Could use some active leadership.
Be happy to look into that.
Super. And then I love that you did this canopy program. I brought it up at a state public works board retreat. We had up at, I think it was Sun Mountain a year, year and a half ago, when Hillary Franz was still DNR director. And she helped direct this program and get some funding that enabled the grants to the eligible entities. And I remember at the public works board where we had substantial funding in the hundreds of millions of dollars. It broke down into traditional infrastructure, which is your solid waste, wastewater, sewer and the rest. Then the category of broadband, which is relatively new from the legislature. But then there was a third category we haven't addressed, but we keep toying with it called innovative infrastructure. And the whole idea of the urban canopy was the idea that where you identify these heat things, which are generally associated with economic impact and lower income neighborhoods and that it traps the heat under climate change. Could we at the state public works board then take your work under the canopy from DNR and begin to fund the planting of trees specifically in these urban deserts? And try to make that happen. I just wanted to share, it came up as a conversation and we did bring up Paulsville as one of the early recipients of a canopy grant. And then I guess in closing, we just had the tree situation on waterfront park. Where trees that were planted by the city ended up being girdled by also the concrete that enables, you know, the, the residents to enjoy the park. That to dive into appropriate planting, appropriate recommendations for different environments, taking into account growth and girth and all the things that you have to take into account. Obviously, we need to fine tune that a little bit. I think that's everything. Thank you all of you for the work. Thank you.
Doug Tabor and then Britt and then Rick.
So I went on Google Earth and started looking at our neighborhoods and, um, there might be a simple answer to this. I don't know, but, um, have we stopped requiring, like, I look at Jensen and it's a tree-lined street, right? There's trees between the sidewalk and, and the road. And then I look at a new development where it's not tree-lined and it's just right night and day. So are, is there a barrier to requiring new developments to have those tree-lined streets?
We require street trees in all of our developments.
One's newer than the other.
Yeah. I mean, it takes a while.
Those are older trees on the left.
Yeah.
These, these, but these aren't, they'll have a strip of trees and there's like literally one, two, three, there's like eight trees versus.
Oh, yeah.
Like forty trees.
Right.
Some development. They have the strip on this, between the sidewalk and the street.
In some developments, like the one that you showed with the trees behind the sidewalk. Yeah, the, there's many times there's quite a bit of utilities in underground, right? And in that sidewalk area. And code or the planning department will require what those trees are planted. It's almost like a dual purpose. They're, they're, they're acting as a street tree and also like a front yard tree because there isn't a planting strip like what you're showing there.
So the planting strip, what's the, the barrier to the planting strip is the utilities and the plantings?
Usually, and, or it's the type of density or the type of development that's occurring there. So it's just, it varies and it depends on what the applicant is able to, to build and get the approval from planning. And. And that's just what that scenario is there.
Problem with the street trees, as you heard the other night, was with a woman who has the trees in Paulsboro places is it rips the sidewalks up. So now what's happened is a lot of the requirements for trees have been moved away from the street and they are being planted in the middle of front yards.
Absolutely.
Go up to Liberty Babys, which is a brand new, and you can see that there's a street, there's a tree in each yard. So is that it, Doug?
No easy solution. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so then we have Britt and then we have Rick. That's, so that kind of segues well, I think, into some of my comments and maybe questions, but we want to just clarify, we don't regulate private property. Is that right?
That's correct in terms of trees, yes.
So I've said this before in years past, when you all have been good enough to come to our meetings, but I would like for our policy to have more teeth, you know, I feel like there's a right size for us with regulation of trees, you know, between maybe where we are now and like how Bainbridge manages trees, which is very robust and aggressive. But it's, it's pretty devastating from one day to the next to have these legacy trees just disappear. And I know I've described that before, but I live in Old Town and one day a copper beach was just gone, you know, I mean, that thing was this big around and gone. No, no permit, nobody knew anything about it. It's in front of one of the historic homes in Paulsboro. And maybe it was sick, you know, there's lots of things I don't know, but, but that's what the permitting process can be for. So I'm trying to read between some of your lines and I'm, it seems like maybe the tree board would like some direction from council to fully audit our code and find the ways we could improve this program. And I would like to put it to my colleagues that we should give them that direction. I'm not done.
But that's what we're here for. We're here for you and for the residents. And so if you give us direction, then we know which way to hit.
I mean, how do my?
Sign me on.
I'm really, I'm really passionate about trees, like they make me pretty emotional, you know, when the trees in the park had to come down or blew down, like that stuff happens, but they're, they're, some of them are frankly irreplaceable. And so it makes me nervous, you know?
So we have Rick next.
Can I make just a quick suggestion to her point? We have the council retreat coming up. I've visited with Mr. Gelder, as perhaps some of others of you have. One of the conversations we're going to have at part of the retreat is about values and what we value in the city and what we want to value going forward. It seems to me this could be a piece of that, that we could spend a little time on it. I know, I know Rob's agenda is getting, but I'm just, that could be an opportunity for it. I don't think we want to do it tonight. I agree that it's something worthy of preacher discussion. I can see where the tree board would perhaps appreciate some additional direction. And so I'm prepared to do that, but I think we need to think about the best way to do that.
Uh, Rick, go ahead.
Yeah, I agree, particularly when we get into like with developers too, because we may give them guidelines, but if they cut something down that they're not supposed to, it's down. So yeah, I think, you know, yeah, looking at, looking at what those recourses are and, you know, not maybe making it a little more, a little more painful to ask forgiveness rather than permission, which I think is right now where they're at in a lot of cases. I'm thinking of the tree across the Safeway.
That I was, I was absolutely livid about that.
Yeah.
And I mean, I took that developer and met him up in the second floor and just, and really gave him a piece of my mind.
I think that thing was about two feet across. And yeah, that's a hundred years to replace that.
He didn't even, he was clueless. He didn't understand why I was even upset. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, which then had people see it and be upset. Yeah. So thank you for the, when answering Doug's question of kind of like, what's an average sort of, you know, what's, what's thirty-five percent really mean? Like compared to others and all that, that was helpful. Obviously more is better, but you know, just to have an idea. If you go back to the first overhead shot, I think it's ninety-four. And I'm, I'm kind of surprised because that pretty much looks like Walmart's all, what was Walmart is all treated in at this point? I didn't live here then, so I'm wondering, had the Nike site grown back at that point that that's so treat over?
Yeah, a lot of the trees had filled in.
Okay, so the Nike site was decommissioned in the early sixties.
Yeah.
So it's probably thirty years of vegetation.
I was just, I was really surprised to see how much coverage was in that site, knowing what it was. And so I would, I would kind of, with that, I would, I would guess that a lot of our decrease comes from clearing that site, seeing as how much was there then versus now that whole area is pretty much been cleared. So not that it makes it better, but it explains the numbers a little bit.
Sure.
I would, I would like, obviously we have to give you direction, but suggestion on kind of where I think what Doug was asking of, what do you want us to do? Like what, what do you want to see out of this? Like what, you know, going forward? So give us, give us some more guidance so we can tailor the response appropriately. And then just the last comment on the numbers. The city mileage limit that's on this uses water. So five point three nine square miles includes bay, which is fair. However, I'm not sure that using the water to calculate tree canopy percentage is fair. If we went down to four point eight square miles, which is the land map coverage, I think our numbers would be a little better. So it makes sense because that is the true city limits. But in this sense of a real number of our trees, we probably shouldn't include the bay in the number.
Yeah, good point. Just.
One comment I'd like to have, don't ever dismiss alder forests. Alders are the lungs of the forest. And if you are stupid enough to cut it down a bunch of alders, you are going to have a swamp. Okay, because I don't know how, I, they suck up literally gallons of water. Okay, so you see an alder stand is because it's wet. If you take those alders away, it's going to be a lake. And so just, I heard a comment about being not good trees. Alders are great trees. Okay? Don't take the alders away. Okay, any other further comments?
I just wanted to add a little bit to what you had mentioned earlier and also about the anyway, but the, some jurisdictions, they, they have a certain percentage requirement for your square footage of your lot or your property. So you need to maintain that. And there can be a a permit acquired for removal, whether and for hazard tree or a risk tree or even a healthy tree, unfortunately, like the copper beach. But, but anyway, that allows the city to know what is going on and what's on that property. And if that one tree is removed and that may kick in that there should be two trees per that square footage. You know, there's a check there and you can actually have a file on that, that parcel or that lot. And they can keep track of that as opposed to some other, you know, but that's one, one way to go about it. So.
Okay.
That term that you explained earlier, floating.
Floating gardens?
Yeah. When I said about giving us guidance going forward too, that seems to be like, that's something more for the commercial areas.
Right.
Our commercial areas aren't going to change a whole lot in that there's not going to be more development, it's going to be redevelopment. So for me, I'd like to hear in the recommendations in how would you recommend redevelopment of our commercial areas include that? Because like I said, right now, I think the Walmart, Walmart, Home Depot, that area, all of O'Hava, it's kind of already developed. It would be redevelopment that's going to change the picture up there. If we look at Viking, we look at three oh five, significant redevelopment there, you know? Like it would be nice to have an idea of what we should suggest to planning. Planning suggests to them of if we're going to have big significant redevelopment in those areas, what we would like to see to make it more canopy friendly, that kind of thing. Because I said, I don't see a lot happening up in Walmart in that area because planting trees in the parking lots is likely to lead to.
Parking lots are too big.
Yeah, they're going to leave the pavement, you know, tearing up parking lot issues.
Those parking lots were developed like every day was Christmas, right?
Yeah.
Okay, it's nuts. So there's some things that we could do up there. So who's next? I think Ed was next and then you, Britt, go ahead.
Just a quick comment to Jeff and the board. We've been supportive and heard a number of presentations on the North Kids have School District pollinator program. Whereas that's not exactly true, you might take into account where there are parallel or sympathetic efforts where one program can support the other, or at least be aware of that cross referencing.
I'd like to add one of our newest board members who's not here tonight, Ashley Lloyd, has actually consulted and worked with our P three committee. And some of the soil and water conservation funds from our budget, I've supported some of the taller iterations or plantings that we've done as, as part of that effort. So we are definitely working in that direction.
It all works together.
Yes.
All right. So Britt and then let's, I think we need to keep moving along. Yeah.
A question, just maybe food for thought, I don't know. As you were going through the presentation and mentioned education for, for property owners for, for tree care and retention, it kind of occurred to me. Are there or could there be resources for private property owners who have incredible trees that take a lot to keep them healthy? You know, it, it's not an inexpensive proposition to do the kind of regular care that keeps things.
We did just join the conservation district. Remember the presentation they made, they have all kinds of tools for homeowners? So that could, I think, to your point, I think, Britt, that could be helpful.
Okay.
And we could update our city website for the tree board that has more resources available to residents. We already three, three times a year about do classes for the public through Parks and Rec on pruning and tree care and, and those are all really important as well. Yeah.
Thank you.
And I would just like to add, as we wrap up, thank you for allowing the presentation and your time. It was a lot of really great questions. On the horizon, we will definitely be working a little bit more intimately with the planning department. They are very interested in hearing more about the results of these findings and some of the findings that we've even expanded upon since then. And then we are also going to be doing some public facing presentations about the findings so that we can engage. It's just kind of an open door. So keep your eye out for that. And finally, I'd be happy to make sure this lands in your hands. But I don't want to bombard you because you have a lot of information. So I'm happy to send you anything you want. So thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very good.
Appreciate it.
And Kevin, you are going to be really missed. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Really seriously.
He's been a huge part of the tree board.
He's been a huge part of Paulsboro.
Yeah.
Okay. So thank you, Kevin. Thanks, guys. Good work. Okay, now we're on to resolution for Parks and Rec fee schedule update. And this is Jeff.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Council and community members. I am going to be sitting here for three resolutions. We're going to go through them one by one fairly quickly, but if you have questions, just let me know. The first resolution I'm sitting in front of you for is to update the Parks and Rec schedule, our fee schedule. So we learned that that has not been updated since 2014, so it's outdated. The fee schedule is outdated. We need to make sure it's accurate. A resolution is a great way to handle this. And we, we weren't aware of that we were needing to do this. The fees we researched with our team, took a look at a market analysis, they're going up only slightly from what we're currently doing right now. And the main thing that is being updated outside of the data point in the fee schedule is the change. Just to be aware of, because we picnic pavilions are very popular, so people could do birthday parties, are just going up ten dollars. So from, from where it was, I think it's at forty right now, it's going to fifty instead of ten dollars in an extra hour, it's fifteen. It's still very affordable for community members and puts us in market conditions. But we, we don't want to have too big of a barrier where people can't use their own parks or it's, it's too much. So it's a very minor update and I'd be surprised if we have to update it anytime soon for that amount.
Jeff, quick question. I'm assuming that these fees are the same whether you live in the city of Paulsboro or you live in Kingston or wherever. Is that correct?
No, great question.
Okay.
So thank you, Councilmember McVeigh. If you are a resident, you get a discount of ten dollars. So, so it's not fifty dollars for a picnic shelter reviving, it's forty.
Yeah, okay, great.
So we extend those discounts. That's an excellent question.
That, that sounds very appropriate. Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I agree with all this, but I just have one concern that I brought up when we talked about special act event permits that we don't drive or that people don't just take it upon themselves to use these facilities without going through the process because they don't want to get permits, they don't want to pay fees. Seeing it happen where people are spontaneously gathering in our gazebos or events with pretty well laid out events that I find it hard to believe it's spontaneous when, to have it that organized. So while we do need to capture fees, I just, if we're going to do this, which I agree we should, and we do want to do the event changes, which I agree we should, we just have to have an enforcement mechanism for when people don't want to comply with what they're supposed to do.
Any other questions for Jeff? All right. Next one, Parks and Recreation Commission. Great. Okay.
Yes.
So I'm hearing the council will like to send the last agenda item to consent for next week. Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Okay. That's all right. So I'm, I'm just going down the workshop agenda. So item C and D just to the consent agenda. Is that what you're saying?
No.
We haven't, oh, okay.
Okay, we're only talking about item B now.
Okay, we're only talking about item B. Okay, got it? Okay, all right. Item B is going on consent. Now, would you like to go on to item C?
I would love to. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Our meetings for Parks and Rec Commission are out of date, so we're updating it. Right now, we have been meeting for a little over a year on a monthly basis because there's a lot to do. There's a lot to do to serve our community. The current resolution says that the Park and Rep Committee Commission should meet every other month. Well, that's a little bit of an issue because if a community member has a concern, they may have to wait up to two months. We want to be, the commission wants to be available every single month. They want to start meeting in January instead of February. And they want to meet at five thirty, not seven PM, because it works well for folks' schedules, but especially works well for staff. Because we can go, we can have, just have a slightly longer day and jump into that. And we've piloted it for over a year. It's been really well received. And you're seeing the proposed changes to the resolution for meeting times, dates. And changing one other small thing, the, we have nine members on the commission and we want to be able to extend as opposed only allowing two, doing this for memory, allowing two who live in outside of city limits, but within North Kids have School District boundaries, just being a bit more flexible and allowing up to three. I think I have that right. Let me just double check that.
Any problem with that?
I have that right.
Yeah, I'm reading it here. Up to three members, maybe non-residents of the city who live in North Kids have School District. It had been two.
Thank you.
Ed and then Doug and then Rick.
I know something the mayor has been interested in, and I think it has merit, but it needs to be explored is down the road, a metropolitan park district, and we need to start being inclusive now for that feedback. Not to pass or not pass that idea, but to get the feedback early on. And if we just constrain it to within the city limits, we're cutting ourselves off from an important component of our neighbors' input.
And I'll just very quickly add to that. We, we looked at, our team looked and shared it with the commission. What, who's signing up for our rec programs? Residents versus non-residents? Non-residents are the majority. We, we serve a lot of folks for four point seven four square miles. And it makes sense to have some represent, higher representation. So we're, we're well aligned. Thank you, Marylex Stern on that.
Okay, Doug and then Rick.
Yeah, kind of the same thing, maybe just twist. So just for clarification, we've allowed to, to non, two members that were non-residents before. Right, correct?
Correct.
So this is three. Because Kingston has a metropolitan park district and the size of it, would it make sense for our non-resident members to be, the requirement to be a nine eight three seven zero? I.e. a Paulsboro address.
I, I think.
Therefore, that it drives us to potentially a metropolitan park district for nine eight three seven zero.
Yep.
Or.
The county of Paulsboro, nine eight three seven zero. The county of Paulsboro, 98370. You have to have that zip code.
You have to have the zip code, not, so if I may, is council proposing updating the resolution to not be within North Kitsap School District boundaries, but to have a 9837 zero zip code?
Yep.
Address?
How does that affect the current members? Are, are there any that would not?
Most of them are in the city, so they were.
I would have to check. I'm.
I mean, I wouldn't want to preclude someone who's volunteered their time already and is.
Maybe it's next time they come up, but I just, just standpoint, we do have a metropolitan park district. We got Keyport doing everything. Just from the standpoint of, I, I agree with putting our arms around the people that have a Paulsboro address.
They think they're Paulsboro. They are Paulsboro.
They are. They have a Paulsboro address.
Okay.
They make us.
No, go ahead.
Oh, okay. A suggestion may be that we could, when we revisit this, revisit the resolution and look at any other updates. We could come back to council with who would be affected and then just do another update. Keep it, keep it moving forward is what I would propose.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I was gonna say, maybe just bring into a business first consent, figure out who it's going to affect, and we make that change.
Over next week? Okay.
Yeah. So we know what we're doing when we say that. I do agree, though. I think going with the 98370 versus North Kitsap is probably a better way to go. Because North Kitsap technically, no, school district limits it a little, but North Kitsap includes two park districts because technically that includes Baywatch. So yeah, we should probably narrow it a little bit. But I agree with the rest of it. My only comment goes back to another item I brought up in the past in that we have very clear language in this resolution on who can be on our board, on this board, and what happens if they move, which is actually clearer than the requirements on our own elected officials. This is clearer on what happens if one of us doesn't live in the city, then, you know, so. I don't know. I, I find it interesting that we're tougher on the members of the Parks and Rec Committee than we are on ourselves by our own codes.
Okay. Everybody okay with where we are with this one? Okay?
So is it moving, just for my clarity, is it moving to consent or am I coming back next week with business?
This is business.
Business. Got it. Thank you.
Okay, so the next one is resolution of Paulsboro Tree Board update. We already done that. Why is it on the twice?
Tree Board. Now we're on Tree Board.
Tree Board, that's right. Sorry.
And the tree board's here, which is wonderful.
Okay, super.
So this has been something that the tree board has also, so welcome. We have an outdated resolution. We need to update it. Tree Board has been meeting from a every other month to better serve our community members to an every month and meeting at an earlier time. So what this proposed resolution update is doing is a few things. One, it's moving into monthly meetings. I'm looking at my highlights right now. It's changing the composition just slightly, so we can, instead of having seven tree board members, we can have nine. There has been challenges in the past of folks not being able to attend. And, you know, you miss one meeting, then you can probably miss two meetings. And we also want to make sure that, that at least six of those proposed nine would be within city limits. So three again can live in North Kitsap School District boundaries or 9830, that's the guidance. So there we go. I see a nose tap. And the other two things are expanding the membership requirements to not all, to not be so rigidly focused. So if you have an environmental background or other related areas of expertise, you saw the goals with education and outreach that, that those folks can be considered to apply for the tree board. We struggle with applicants for both the Park and Rec Commission and the Tree Board, especially moving into more meetings per year now with serving our community.
Okay. Anybody have a problem with this? Sounds good to me.
Business with, with the 98370?
Yeah, I think whatever change we make to the other one, we make to this one.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it. Now we're on to amendment to interlocal cooperative agreement for housing incarcerated individuals, and this is Chief.
Thank you, Council. You've been here a while. This is, I hope, easy. It's a change in the contract. They raised rates by $10. And they are our venue for, and a great partners for our jail option.
We agree. It's a little less than I was expecting, so.
Yeah, I was happy.
On the consent next week.
Okay, yeah. Thanks for staying, Chief. Thank you for staying.
And then questions and concerns of the council? Anything, questions and concerns? Seeing none? Continued public comment. You have comment. The council steps the podium. You have three minutes and state your name for the record. Anybody? Hello? Anybody? Okay.
Can we go back to questions and concerns of the council?
Oh, you want, you want.
Sorry, I wasn't fast enough.
Okay.
I, I just, just for the record, I, I just, I didn't, the previous conversation we had about the taking a position on the human rights constitutional issue. The reason I mentioned that I was, I wasn't going to support it because its genesis was the Democratic Party. I should explain, we are in nonpartisan positions, just the members of the public know that. And I, we've done, I think, a remarkable job over the years, especially in current times, keeping partisan politics out of our council chambers. And I just want to be clear, I have nothing against the Democratic Party. I have nothing against the Republican Party or Independent Party, the whole gamut, okay? But I just, that, that was part of my concern, and I didn't explain that very well or thoroughly, and I just want to have that on the record. Thank you.
All right. Well, that was Mayor's and Council, we're on to Mayor's and Council comments anyways. So is there any other council comments? Any other Mayor's comments? Then for me?
Yeah, and I'll just say, I explained it to Doug. But as I said, my refusal, because of my job, I hold a role in the federal government similar to what Riannon holds for us in the city. There is conceivably a situation where if this was to go forward, where I could be on both sides of the same lawsuit. So that's why I just, so again, for the public's not, I just don't feel it's appropriate that I take part in that conversation because that situation could conceivably occur if somebody were to do a record request against where I work. So just to be safe, I'm staying on the sidelines of that and no, no value judgment in any direction.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other Mayor and Council comments? Any other comments? We already did public comments and that nobody stood up. So if anybody want to make a motion?
Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
All in favor, stay on.
Aye.
We're done.
Yay. One more.
One more.